But I think having everybody sign up to go to a thing is better than two saying, "I like Oliver."
You're good? Okay, thank you.
It looks like a cute little town. My father's actually in the village, he wasn't expecting that.
Because I had a daughter who lived in Westwood, which is right by the... How come we have our big town? You know? Because, you know, and it's true. We're westernized. I didn't realize that.
Jackie, the one of these. But I was kind of beside myself.
She gave me, she gave me two as well. She all tended to give you two. See, she gave you two. She gave me two. Yeah, see, she needed us all to. She knows that. Maybe she thinks we're gonna lose them.
What is the, what is the other side of it?
Could I ask you to finish your reading?
So where do we park?
Tell us where to go.
May I call the meeting of the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education to order on June 6th, 2024? In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner: A meeting notice was published in newspaper and on the district website on January 17th, 2024. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building, in the schools, and a copy of the notice filed with township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on May 29th, 2024. They include The Daily Record, The Star-Ledger, Parsippany Focus, Tap into Parsippany, Parsippany Patch, and the district website. This regular public meeting is being video recorded as per Bylaw 0168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and on our Video on the Go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using staff or student names in your statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. Sue, may we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Abraham?
Here.
Mr. Berrios?
Here.
Mrs. Cogan?
Here.
Mrs. Mayer?
Here.
Mr. Rayah?
Here.
Mrs. Chappell?
Here.
Dr. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Golderer?
Here.
Mr. Chaffo?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We are going to begin our meeting with our student committee reports. Emily, would you mind leading us off?
No. Do we have any reports for us? For what? The committees? I don't have anything. No. All right. Good to do anything.
Hello, everyone. The Student Council went on a trip to Six Flags on May 29th for the Spring Awards, winning Community Smiles, and being a part of the 1000s Club for state charity donations. Red Stock was on June 1st from 12 to 3 with clubs and local businesses hosting booths of games and selling items. Powderpuff was at, was that night at 7 with the juniors beating the seniors 22 to 0, not to brag. The Hawkeye Award is presented every year to those who go above and beyond for our school. This year, being awarded to Mrs. Bound, Mrs. Laverdy, Mr. Salem, or Mrs. Salem, Leona Roman, Robert Spiro, Mrs. La Presti, and Mrs. Collins. Key Club had a Duck Donuts fundraiser in Whippany on June 1st between 1:00 and 5:00 p.m. $5 of every party box sold went to the Parr High Key Club. On the 3rd was the PHS Band Solo and Small Ensemble Concert. On the 4th, our senior valedictorian and saluditorian were honored at the Morris County Academic Recognition Dinner. Daniel Romero is our school's valedictorian and Celine Chen is our saluditorian. Last night, the seniors had their scholarship and awards ceremony emceed by none other than myself and Catherine Orlana. The Senior Prom is tonight from 5 to 10 at the Legacy Castle. PHS Cheer will host a Moana Movie Night on Friday at 7:00 p.m. at 6:15. Tickets are $5 for a snack bag and water, and were on sale over this past week during unit lunch and at the door on Friday. The seniors are going on their senior trip on the 10th to Dorney Park. PHS Senior Sunset is on the 12th from 7:00 to 9:30. Finals start on the 13th and last until the 18th, which I'm assuming none of us are excited for. The Project Graduation Deadline is on the 14th for the, for the event. Senior Brunch is on the 19th before their graduation rehearsal, and Graduation is on the 20th from 9:30 to 10:30. Thank you.
Sunika, please.
Hi, everyone. We had our Six Flags trip last Wednesday. The PHHS chapter of Mu Alpha Theta, the National Math Honor Society, presented awards and inducted new members for this year on Tuesday, May 21st. The Boys Lacrosse Team had one of the most successful seasons in program history. They finished 12-7 and won the program's first state playoff game versus Columbia. Boys Track Team won the county championships. The softball team won the 2024 Maris Cup Trophy 16-5. Last Thursday was Senior Prom at Valley Regency in Clifton. Saturday was State Sectionals for Track. This Monday, we had the Senior Award Ceremony honoring students who earned scholarships. Yesterday was the Jazz and Other Ensembles Concert. On June 12th, the PHHS players will have their Spring Cabernet and will perform a collection of villainous Broadway songs. And Graduation will be on Thursday, June 20th at 1:30 with Project Graduation after Adventure Crossing Jackson, New Jersey. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunika. Thank you, Emily. Do any board members have questions for our two students? Seeing none, thank you. Thank you so much. Before we suspend our meeting for the festivities that we're all here assembled for, I'd just like to take a minute to remember D-Day. On June 6th, 1944, during World War II, Allied forces launched what was known as Operation Overlord, the codename for the massive Allied invasion of Normandy, France. With more than 150,000 Allied troops from the United States, United Kingdom, Canada, Australia, Belgium, Czechoslovakia, Denmark, France, Greece, the Netherlands, New Zealand, Norway, and Poland landing on the beach, approximately 20,000 soldiers on both sides lost their lives. And those who took part witnessed one of the most pivotal battles against Axis forces in the beginning of a prolonged, costly, and ultimately successful campaign to liberate Europe. On a personal note, my dad fought in the European Theater in World War II for four years, from 1940 to 1944. He was in what was known as the Army Air Corps, the precursor to the Air Force. While he didn't participate in Normandy, he did participate in a number of battles in Europe and in Northern Africa. Today marks the 80th anniversary of D-Day, and I want to thank you to the men and women who have and are serving to protect our great country. Thank you so much. At this time, we're going to suspend tonight's regular agenda to allow for the presentation of staff awards. Please note, after the awards are over, there will be cookies and punch in the cafeteria, which is to the left of the auditorium as you exit, and our photographer will be available to take pictures of yourself and your families. And at this time, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Sutter.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr., Mr. Chaffo. I would like to thank everyone.
Doctor's okay. I'll take the doctor.
Doctor Ch, yeah, I'm giving them out tonight. Well, I want to thank everybody for coming, and I want to thank everybody in the audience who's here to support their family member. I want to thank all the recipients tonight. Without you, none of this happens. Without you, our students, they don't, they don't learn. So what I want to say is, we appreciate everything that you've done for us this year. We appreciate what you've done for our students, and we thank you. Without any further ado, Dr. Mulrooney?
How you doing?
Great.
It's a fun night, guys. Let's loosen up, all right? This is a good one. It's okay. All right. So there were several, several end of year, several, I can't even speak, I'm so nervous, the excitement. There were several end of year celebrations this evening, so many staff members weren't able to attend. We'll be announcing everyone, whether they're in attendance or not. I would like to congratulate all of, all of the staff members that we're recognizing. To the retirees, I wish you a long, happy, adventurous, relaxing, decision-free retirement. That's all we really want, isn't it? We don't want to make any more decisions. We want to relax and have some fun, and hope you guys have that. You made it, and we appreciate all your hard, all your hard work over the years. It's nice, it's nice to see you all here tonight. To our Teacher of the Year, our 25-year teachers, thank you for all of your hard work and dedication to your students. In case you haven't realized, teaching is not an easy job. It takes a lot of patience, smarts, talent, diligence, and love. So we appreciate all of your talents and all of your effort, and especially all of your love, because your students are better people for it. So it's gonna be a great night. We're excited to recognize you. And to all the family members, you know, this is a wonderful thing, and it's great to, to really tell the people you love that they're amazing, and that's what we're here to do. So without any further ado, I'd like to call up Lindsay Wyman, the PTHEA Vice President, to offer congratulations.
Good evening, Dr. Sutter, Board of Education, Mr. Ricker, Mr. Dr. Mulrooney, sorry there. All of you here to be honored tonight, and all of you who showed up to show your support and appreciation, welcome. It is a great privilege to have the opportunity to speak to you on behalf of the PTHEA tonight. As the school year winds down and we begin to reflect on the growth of our students and the journey that this school year has been, June shows up before we even have a chance to blink. This is always such an incredibly special time of year. If we carve out a little time to slow down and look back, it can be extremely reflective and rewarding. One of my favorite parts of June is to be able to celebrate the careers of our newest retirees. We have the great privilege to honor the noble careers of those that have laid the path, have set the bar, and who have time and time again reminded us what it means to be resilient and what it means to leave an impression on those you teach and those with whom you work beside. You have left your mark, and you will be missed by the countless people you've impacted over the years. Best of luck in your new chapter. We also have the opportunity to celebrate career milestones, as many of you are being honored for achieving the extremely impressive distinction of 25 or more years of service to the Parsippany Troy Hills School District. That dedication is unmatched, and your tenacity is to be admired and applauded. Finally, we have amongst us educators whom we get to recognize for their achievements of excellence in education, both in and out of the classroom. These are the educators who go above and beyond for the students of Parsippany and have earned the respect and admiration of the staff in their building, who have bestowed upon them their title, Teacher of the Year. Keep that fire burning. Keep inspiring. Whatever phase you are at in your career, your influence is powerful and full of boundless potential. Living and growing up in this district, I have the privilege of being here to honor friends and colleagues, former teachers and mentors, and those who have taught and influenced my own children. All of those being honored tonight shine a bright light throughout this auditorium. Aristotle once said, "Educating the mind without educating the heart is no education at all." Take a look around this room, and you will feel it. The hearts of so many have been touched by those being awarded tonight. Congratulations to all.
At this time, we'll Board President Andrew Chaffo and Board Member Jack Rayah, please join me to present the retiree awards. There are a lot of names we're gonna read tonight, and I, I went through them all this afternoon, and I eyeballed them all up to make sure I could pronounce them all, and any, any I wasn't 100% sure about, I did call principals to check pronunciation. So names are really important, and if I, if I get your name a little wrong, I truly apologize, but we're, I did my best. The Board is proud to honor the careers of the following staff members who will be retiring this year. Central Middle School Barbara Bailey is not in attendance. From Intervale School Nancy Chaffo. You didn't know you were gonna get romance tonight, did you? From Intervale School Laura Katzenberger. From the JRW Building Joan Herman is not in attendance. From the JRW Building Robin Polo. CEC Building. Somebody's been watching, what's that, The Price is Right? That'd be The Price is Right, I think. From Lake Parsippany Fred Douglas. Fred, how many years total? Not in attendance due to her daughter's wedding, from Lake Parsippany Kathleen Washington. From Lake Parsippany Rockaway Meadow Carrie Perel. From Littleton, not in attendance, oh, yeah, a little bit more. From Littleton, not in attendance Jacqueline Greenberg.
Sorry, I've been writing this for 10 years. Don't worry. That's all right. I'd like to thank you so much for this honor. I've been a teacher for over four decades, like Fred, so if you'll please allow me a little chat totaling one minute per decade, I'd be very appreciative. Back in high school, I remember hearing a lecture about future occupations that we seniors might end up in, and how it was worth considering having a vocation, not just a job and a future. Well, I know, I've been lucky, because I found just that. When I think about the longevity of this vocation of mine, I absolutely know to what it can be attributed. First of all, I have this great supportive family. Bob, my husband, first to stick up for teachers when people ask about summer pay and summers off, or a contract waiting to be agreed upon. He's put up with piles on my dining room table for years and has always offered sage advice. And I know so many of you have supportive families as well. And I have these two great daughters, Julie and Caroline, always willing to listen and encourage me, share their ideas when asked, 100% supportive. And by the way, my daughters have remained joyful learners, thanks to the educators of Mount Tabor, Brooklawn, and Parr Hills. Longevity for me has also been thanks to my students and their families. The students, who despite challenges, carry on, try their hardest, are their hardest, and are honest and vulnerable learners. They bring joy to our classrooms, and they share their accomplishments and show their growth. And it is because of their parents, who are always ready to be part of a team. I think my longevity has also been because of support from the Board of Ed. You have created these opportunities for recognition, like tonight, which I know we all really appreciate. Hey, early on in my career, I was given the opportunity to be part of a Fulbright Teacher Exchange Program, and the Board of Ed welcomed my British counterpart, as I taught for a year in England, and the lessons from that have impacted my entire career. So I thank you again for that, and I encourage you to say yes, should a colleague come to you with an out-of-the-box plan that excites them, made such a difference. While I'm speaking of this, Board of the Board of Ed, I'd also personally like to thank, as I know with all of you, Joni Benos. Joni's been at the helm of this district through many changes of the guard, and is one of the great constants of our district, always professional and caring, always. In my career, where relationships are everything, I'd like to name just a few groups of people who have made all the difference to me. My colleagues from each of my school, especially Mount Tabor, where I taught for over 20 years, and especially my new colleagues at Northvale, where I've been so lucky to finish up in. Colleagues from both of these schools have let me mentor up, mentor down, and mentor sideways. They've been there to set examples of teaching excellence, always participating in innovative programs, like all of you, because you're all here tonight, brainstorming, sharing materials, and making me laugh. On a side note, Northvale gave me the special honor this year to be Teacher of the Year, but I have to tell you that I can't go more than 10 feet in any direction at this school to find someone deserving of Teacher of the Year. That is the truth. Another group has always had an impact on my teaching life was our paraprofessionals, and I'd like to give a serious shout-out to them. They work alongside us in the classroom to make sure our students, who need the extra support, get it with respect and dignity. These paraprofessionals are never recognized enough. I've worked with many great ones over the year. There's one in particular, who's been consistently with me for the past 10 years, who has shown initiative, dedication, and consistent gentle kindness, and that's my friend Nima Patankar. There you are. Here's to the paras of our district. There's been a, I'm almost done. There's been a number of awesome administrators who have made such a difference in the working environment and the positive culture of the schools where I've taught. There was Vinnie Aniello, my longtime Special Service Director, and who always made a personal connection with every single special ed teacher, and is under him. Lee Burns, my first principal from Lake Hiawatha, who knew the importance of staff connections. He made sure on the first day that we all had a plan for the staff holiday party, which was three months out. Principal Bob Perlett, for whom this auditorium is named, would pop handwritten notes into my mailbox after a special class event to say that he knew education was alive and well in our district. And what about Okie Ritzak, one of my Knollwood Principals, who always encouraged teachers to take risks, and would always ask, "Where are you on the career ladder? What's your next move?" And John Anzel from Mount Tabor, who supported teacher well-being by sponsoring yoga classes for us in the media center after school. And I'd like to mention, most recently, Dr. Natalie Betts, my Northville Principal, who is always supportive, kind, and helpful, and made it so easy for me to transition to Northville four years ago. In closing, I'd like to thank you for indulging me and for listening. I just couldn't help myself, I couldn't, and I needed to tell you about all those who have helped me along the way. I am so fortunate and honored, and I really want to say thank you.
That's a good one. From Persippany High School, not in attendance Subrienza. From Persippany High School Randolph Fadali. From Persippany High School Carmella Foner. From Persippany High School Jennifer France. From Persippany High School James Powells. From Persippany Hills High School, not in attendance Matt Siampa. From Parr High and Parr Hills Debbie Ruby. From Parr High and Parr Hills Amimi Lozansky. From Persippany Hills High School Carol Smith. From Rockaway Meadow Zenon Bilanch. From Rockaway Meadow Josephine Sanders. And from Troy Hill School, not in attendance Patricia Studzinski. I'm gonna thank Mr. Chaffo, Mr. Rayah for being so photogenic, and call up Mr. Berrios, Mrs. Abraham, and Dr. Wright for the next round. We'll now be recognizing staff members for their 25 years of service to the district, and we're proud to honor the following staff members for their for their contributions to our students and schools. And there are some repeats here, which is nice. Susan Angood. Not in attendance, Barbara Bailey. Eugene Bemmi. Not in attendance, Richard Brighton. Madeline Brown. Joseph Dasty. Not in attendance, Ame Doyle. Melissa Fragga. Joseph Guadafiero. Susan Jamison. Joseph Kyle. Not in attendance. Not in attendance, Rebecca Lilienthal. Not in attendance, Patricia Napolitano. Not in attendance, Carrie Perro. Dino Pettenelli. Not in attendance, Taki Radiotis. Not in attendance, Monica Sergio. Not in attendance, Carol Smith. Angel Tavares. Not in attendance, Susan Vikari. Jamie Wall. Dina Viscuso. Stephanie Whalen. Thank you, Mr. Barrios, Mrs. Abraham, and Dr. Wright, for your wonderful greetings and photogenic effervescent images. Would Mrs. Mayer and Mrs. Chappell, please, come to the table? All right. All right. To honor our Teachers of the Year, we give each teacher a red plate, being displayed by Joni Benos in her best Van and White impression. It was a time-honored tradition among early American families that when someone deserved special praise or attention, they were served dinner on the red plate. Now we just let them use the remote control. Big honor. The red plate is a perfect way to acknowledge a staff member's special triumphs, praise a job well-done, reward a goal achieved, or simply say, "You are special today." The Board is proud to honor the following staff members who were selected as Teachers of the Year for 2024. Ready to go? All right. Let's pretend like we don't know who they're going to be. From Brooklawn Middle School, Claire Clear.
Hello and good evening, members of the Board of Education, fellow educators, parents, and distinguished guests. I am deeply honored and humbled to stand before you today as the recipient of the Teacher of the Year Award for Brooklawn Middle School. This recognition is not only a reflection of my dedication and passion for teaching, but the incredible support and collaborative spirit that defines our school community. I have been teaching science in the district at Brooklawn Middle School since December 1998. When I was in high school, I started teaching swimming lessons. And I've always loved seeing the children grow and develop based on what I have taught them. It was then that I realized that this was my calling. The Brooklawn community is very important to me and is an extension of my family. 25 years ago, I had a student in my classroom. Then they co-taught with me and now are a very close friend and part of my family. I also pride myself with the connection I have made with the students and are touched when they come to me for advice and to visit me. Over the past 20 years, there have been many highlights, such as different grants that I have received and used in my classroom to help spark an interest in the students. I also enjoy participating in the faculty-student basketball game every year and attending the students' sporting events and concerts. I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to the Board of Education, the administration at Brooklawn Middle School for their commitment to excellence in education. You have created an environment where educators are empowered to innovate, inspire, and make a meaningful difference in the lives of our students. I am also incredibly grateful to my fellow teachers and staff members at Brooklawn Middle School. Together, we have fostered a culture of collaboration, innovation, and continuous improvement that sets our school apart as a beacon of excellence in education. I'm always looking forward to meeting with my sixth-grade science team and sharing ideas. To the parents and families of our students, thank you for your trust, partnership, and support. And of course, I must express my deepest appreciation to the students. Your passion for learning and growth reminds me why I chose and became an educator in the first place. And I'm endlessly grateful for the opportunity to be part of your journey. Thank you also to my family, who have continuously supported me. My husband is also a science teacher, and it's just nice to go home and to get advice. Thank you once again for this incredible honor. I'm deeply grateful for the opportunity to serve as Teacher of the Year at Brooklawn Middle School. And I look forward to continuing to make a positive impact in the lives of our students for many years to come. Remember, always be a great night. Thank you.
From Central Middle School, Kevin Schmid.
First, I'd just like to thank the Board of Education for this award. It's greatly appreciated. I'd like to thank Dr. Sutter and the district administration as well, Mr. Gray, and our Central Middle School administration, and my wife, who's here, and my family for all their love and support. Central Middle School is a special place to me for many reasons. Many years ago, actually too many years to count, I was a student there. So it helped to shape me as the adult that I am today. I get to develop relationships with my students and student athletes in the role that I interact with them as the athletic coordinator. It's a special place because of all the professionals who every day work to influence and be positive impacts on their students. And it's a special place because of six very special colleagues in the Health and Physical Education Department. They're all outstanding educators who make my job easier. And I would not be receiving this award without all their support. So thank you to them. I consider myself very lucky. I get to do something that I love to do at a place that I love to do it. So I look forward to, I would not say many years, I would say more years at Central Middle School, being an educator and being involved with the students of Parsippany. Thank you very much.
From Eastlake, Anna Marie Hebelink. From Intervale School, Tracy Casso.
Hello, everybody. I truly want to thank all of you who are here tonight, whether you are the giver of an award, the receiver, or the supporter. One cannot happen without the other. Praise is a win-win situation. I didn't write a speech as to what I've done for the teaching profession, but rather what the teaching profession has done for me. I'm currently in my eighth year of teaching after having to close a franchise owned and operated by my family for more than two decades. When the franchisor converted the business model from that of a brick-and-mortar showroom to a digital model, my family, along with 160 other franchisees, quickly learned the meaning of a soft close. I can tell you from experience, there's no such thing as a soft close when you're fully invested and love what you do. And not a day went by during this transition when my brother and I didn't wonder, "How will I ever be this happy in another career?" During this time, in what I believe to be God's timing, I was sitting on the bleachers at my younger son's basketball game. And a parent, who is also a teacher in our hometown, turned to me and said, "Trace, I don't know if you want to do this, but we have a new fourth grader from Central America, and we need someone to translate from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. daily, so she can learn." Those key words, "so she can learn", caused me not to think twice. And that was the start of my ESL experience. Nearly two years later, when the posting came out for a full-time ESL position for Intervale School, I again had no reservations. I was greeted by Letitia Lombardi, who is as refreshing today as the first day I met her. I was then interviewed and hired by Principal Chris Wach and ESL Supervisor Vicky Santana. I am so very fortunate that we all share the same compelling vision for our students and that they saw that in me at the time of hiring. And as if things could not get any brighter, I soon learned that I was working with, and often side-by-side with, a guidance counselor like no other, Donna O'Donnell. We've all heard the saying, "You can't soar like an eagle when you surround yourself with turkeys." But it didn't take me long to realize that I was with the eagles. Thank you to the entire Intervale staff for the recognition and to the Parsippany Troy Hills District for the climate that you support. Thank you to my family and friends, who are a very big part of who I am today. My speech cannot be complete without thanking our students. And I know they're not here tonight, but for all of us, they are the reason we come to work every day. I'm lucky to be a teacher VSL because I have a daily reminder that there is no specific mold for these multilingual learners, but rather a variety of ingredients. As a young student, I remember deciding to continue studying a world language when it was no longer a requirement. My reasoning was simple. If I learn another language, I'll be able to talk to more people. But imagine the reasoning being, "I need to learn this language so I can learn in school." This is the reality of an ESL student. And until they are proficient in the language, they are missing out on valuable instruction that my fellow coworkers devote their time and energy to. My job is big, but my heart is even bigger. And I won't stop until I get them where they need to be. On a final note, my husband and I often preach to our children to make sure you find a job you love because that is where you'll spend most of your waking hours. I feel blessed to have found this choice. Thank you very much.
From Knollwood, Marsha Tringali.
I can't believe I turned right without papers in front of me. But I just want to take a moment to say thank you to the Board of Education and Dr. Sutter and all the people at Knollwood School that support me every day, and our principal, Steve Linsenbold. This is about my 30th year of teaching, but only my fifth year in Parsippany. This is about my 30th year of teaching, but only my fifth year in Parsippany, and I was someone as a young person that never even wanted to babysit, or be around kids, and I landed in kindergarten, and I can't imagine myself doing anything different. I also want to say thank you to my family, who spent time over the years, they're growing up now, but cutting and coloring with me and for me, that's it, and Kathy. Most of you know Kathy Marcinkowicz. Everyone says I'm the luckiest person in the school, to have Kathy be in the classroom with me, and I didn't know what that meant at first. And now, when she doesn't come through the door, every morning, I get a little nervous because she really helps me every single day to learn more and more about the district, and I just want to say thank you.
From Lake Hiawatha, Carla Klein. From Lake Parsippany, Michaela Carey.
Wow, thank you so much for having me and for this honor. I really appreciate all of the people who came tonight to be here, and I want to start off by thanking someone who's not here, who I would be forever indebted to if I didn't, who is my mom, an educator of 20 years, who taught me how to read, who taught me how to teach, and who taught me how to love. I will never forget the moment that I learned how to read my very first book. It's this red book with this big white boat on the cover, and when I read it on my own for the first time, my mom got up on the bed, jumped up and down, and was so excited for me. She's the reason that I love to read, she's the reason that I love to teach, and most kids play hooky to leave school and not go to school. I played hooky so I could go to school with her, and to learn how to teach and become a teacher, so I just wanted to start off by thanking my mom. Also, my husband who's here tonight, he has supported me since I decided I wanted to become a teacher, which feels like a really long time ago to me, but I know my retiree friends out there are laughing at me about that, from applying to colleges to my student teaching. Thank you for supporting me throughout my first several years in education, when I could give only 10 because school was taking 90. Thanks for filling in that other 90%, so thank you. When I transitioned to Lake Parsippany School a few years ago as the reading specialist, I was really nervous. There was a lot of unknowns and a new job and a new role, and so I did my rounds around the building, looking for some friendly faces, and luckily, I found one at every corner. But the other thing I found at Lake Parsippany School the first time I ever walked into my classroom was this book, which is Going Lobstering, that red cover, big white boat book that I had never been able to find for the last 20 years, which is the first book that I ever learned how to read as a five-year-old. And so that's how I knew that Lake Parsippany would always be home for me and would always feel like home for me. So I want to thank my supervisor, Ms. Marissa Rosa, for giving me the opportunity to pursue my dream job, my principal, Ms. Michelle Hoffman, who gives me the flexibility and the drive to be able to design the reading program there in a way that helps as many students as I can. And of course, thank you to my colleagues, the ones who are here tonight, the ones who aren't, my penguin family and my friends. Thank you for supporting me on my journey, for collaborating with me, for advocating for the kids with me, and for all the ways you instill a love for literacy in our building. Thank you for taking my ideas and running with them, no matter how crazy or creative. Your friendship is invaluable to me, and I will always be grateful for it. I look forward to what we're going to accomplish in the years to come. And last, I just want to thank, even though they're not here, all the bookworms that come into my room each day. They fill my room with laughter, learning, joy. There's a lot to chase out there in the world, a lot of exciting things to see, but if you've ever seen a kid blend three sounds together and read a CVC word for the first time, man, it's a feeling. Like, it is a feeling you're going to want to chase forever. And I have some of the most hardworking students who give me that feeling every single day, and I am so grateful. Reading, I know you guys know this, but I have to preach because I have a microphone in front of me, reading is not just a skill, it's a gateway. It leads to knowledge, to empathy, to endless possibilities. I'm so grateful that I get to be a reading teacher, that I get to teach other kids how to read and how to love reading, and I'm so grateful that I get to do it at Lake Par School. So thank you, I'm so honored to be here tonight. Thank you so much.
From Littleton School, Caitlin Atkinson.
Hi, everybody, thank you. Thank you for having me, Board of Ed. It's only my second year in the district, and I just want to say thank you to my peers at Littleton for welcoming me so nicely. You guys are awesome, and I wouldn't be able to do this without my team of paraprofessionals, so thank you, guys. They are the unsung heroes for our kids, so this means the world. Thank you.
From Mount Tabor, Allison Dundee.
Good evening. I'm very grateful and humbled by this honor, especially to have been included in the same group as all of these distinguished honorees. There's so many colleagues, friends, a mentor teacher, Mrs. Mayer, my principal, Marlene Toomey, and family members who have encouraged me, supported me, and guided me throughout the years, like my mom, who is an amazing special education teacher at Rockaway Meadow. Three things that have inspired me and have made an impact on my career are my coworkers, my students, and most importantly, my family. Everyone at Mount Tabor knows that if I'm at an event, my husband's at an event. Anthony has gotten pretty good at scooping ice cream. Whether it was a phone call, a text message, an Instagram meme, or an AI-generated reply to a crazy email, I'm fortunate to have all of these people in my life that support me, laugh with me, and most importantly, travel this amazing journey with me. Teaching was never my major, nor was it my first career choice, however, it is my favorite and one that I found the most rewarding. I guess you were right, Mom.
From North Vale, Laura Nelson. From Parsippany High, not in attendance, probably observing her students at their jobs, Christina Russell. From Parsippany Hills, Betty Wang Gwarke.
Thank you so much for this award. On the day I found out I received this honor, my students made a poster for me that said, "Thank you for being a part of my journey." When I read this, it made me realize that as their ESL teacher, I have the honor of being with them since day one of their first school in a new country. I get to witness how they transform year after year, and I have the privilege of being part of their journey. I want to dedicate this honor to them, my past and present ESL students, who have displayed courage and determination each and every morning when they walk through these doors. In some time in the future, if my students even mention my name as a part of their high school experience and say, "I remember Mrs. Wang, she was the first teacher that helped me when I started school at PHHS," I'll know I did my job well. My goal is to just be a part of their narrative. I want to have influence, not because they think I'm an especially great ESL teacher, but because they know I care. Thank you to the PHHS administration and staff, my confidante Tricia, and my team of ESL content area teachers. It truly takes a village. To Vicky Santana and my department, thank you for your guidance and encouragement, and of course, to my family for your love and support.
From Rockaway Meadow School, Jacqueline Takahashi. In our last Teacher of the Year recognized person, I shouldn't have freelanced there. Should have just stuck to the script. From Troy Hills School, Sarah Stampler.
I'm truly touched and overwhelmed with joy and gratitude to receive this Teacher of the Year award. Thank you all for being here to share this amazing accomplishment with me. I'm honored to have my hard work and determination recognized by the school district. I love what I do, and it warms my heart to know that I can make a positive impact on my students and the school community. This accomplishment is not something I could have ever done on my own. I would like to thank my husband and my family for their constant support, for always pushing me to know that I can reach my full potential. I would also like to thank my fellow educators for their encouragement and their belief in my abilities. A special thank you to my principal and my phenomenal team at Troy Hills, Team Olaf. I would not be here where I am today without your guidance and support. Lastly, I'd like to thank the school district and the superintendent for honoring me with this prestigious award. Thank you so much.
President Chaffa.
Thank you. Hello? Nope. Well, we're going to take a 10-minute recess, so it's a good time for the... Oh, there we go. So congratulations again to the retirees, to the 25-year service award staff, and of course, our Teachers of the Year. You are well-deserving of either retirement or those awards and those milestones, so congratulations again. There's light refreshments in the cafeteria to the left. The board's going to take a 10-minute recess, and we'll reconvene. Come on back if you want to see how the magic is made. It's really going to be interesting.
Yeah, I know.
It looks good.
Checked up on them.
Oh, look at this.
Actually, you know what? I saw the floor. I didn't see them with the stalls put back in.
No, it all looks good.
I thought I saw him in the back corner.
But I thought it was him, but I wasn't 100% sure. It was me at the same time.
Because he was stressed out. Are you gonna... Are you gonna bring some cookies back? I already made it over there. I have never thought... The other side, you can't, you know, it's like...
Yeah, I can't even imagine.
You know, but you never realize how much you lose to the left hand. You know, it's like you just assume I'm right-handed, you know?
Well, it's like, probably five years ago, my daughter fell at the monkey bones and sprained her elbow.
Yeah.
It was her right elbow, and she's right-handed, so she played right, but same thing. It was like, yeah, I never thought of some of the things I had to help her with, it was like...
You never think about it, you know? It's like you take for granted all this stuff. It got warmer in here, or is it not?
I've been warm since I walked in here. I've been warm all day, too.
I knew I saw him. But he's usually like wearing his suit and jacket.
Oh, I've seen him.
No, I'm sure, yeah. Were you here when, when did you start in the district? Because...
Almost 10 years ago, middle of June will be 10 years.
Okay, so almost, because I got on the board on 2001, and Suzanne Olympia at that time was the...
Special Ed.
Special Ed.
Anthony, I think Anthony Giordano was Special Ed when I got here.
Okay, so Olympia, Suzanne had just left. She went to, I think, Wayne, and then it was Giordano who took over. And then when Giordano left, I can't believe Fred Douglas is like a state... 15 years, I said, "I'm 16, I'm crying out loud." I kid it. Could you imagine that? That's like my whole lifetime.
Yeah. Yeah.
He said, he goes, "He started teaching," because he started teaching when I was born. Yeah. I mean, some of the teachers, I just like, I went to vote on Tuesday, and Bridget Makita was there. And Bridget Makita, her daughter went to school with my son.
Okay.
So that's where I knew her from, and then she, you know, as her second career went to teaching, and became a teacher, and then she taught my two younger daughters. And I'm like, the world is just so, like, Teresa and Dennis Mulrooney used to attend St. Peter's Church here in Parsippany, and they did a lot of work with the children's, you know, with the catechism and confirmation, CCD, all that. So they, of course, taught, you know, like, part of their group were involved with my daughter. My oldest was 40, she's gonna be 41. And so, and then Dennis became, he was an English teacher and taught my son English, and then actually was the one that helped him write his essay and everything to get into college.
Oh, wow.
So it's like such a small, and they used to do, and then my daughter got old enough to be one of the, you know, at 18, adult chaperones for the overnight confirmations and all that. So it's just such a small world, you know, and you, and if you realize how much you know everybody, you know, and our school district is so big and so many people, you know, that... Now, she's not the one that works at the...
She's doing the front desk.
At the front desk, the one that would have led...
Yeah, she's always crazy.
And I can't believe Robin's son is getting married. I'm like, oh my god. Like, time just, like, sometimes just flies.
The mics are still on, right?
Did you hear me? Good, I wasn't saying anything bad. I was like, ooh, I didn't say anything bad. I was saying how it's like a circle where, you know, like, some of the teachers were parents when I knew them, and then they went back to teaching. And I said, and then I went, I went to vote at Northville, and there was Bridget Makita.
Oh, being a coworker.
And I'm like, oh my god. And she, and I've known, I knew her from before, and you know, and she taught Katie and Ellie and everything, and then she goes, she goes, "Do you remember me?" And I looked at her, she, her hair was different, you know? And I go, and she goes, "I'm Bridget Makita." I go, "Of course, I know you." Out of context, you know, you're sort of like, if you don't see someone all the time, you kind of like, out of context, they weren't there. But I couldn't believe when I went to the board, she was wearing her pink outfit. Like, it was like, like, pink and shiny, and very, very, what do you call it? Very ornate.
She's so cute.
She goes, "Oh, you have to check in," and I said, "Oh, no," I said, "I'm gonna, I said, I have to be in with Bob," I said, "I said, I'm in education," I said, "It's Suzie." She goes, "Oh," she goes, "I know your name." I know. It's like, we all know each other's names, but, you know, faces. Of course, I, Chris, you have to have seen me coming in to give an evaluation. I had my books, like a hospital, because at first, you know, I could not move this whatsoever. So it was, so I got a couple from Amazon where you just clip, you know, on the, here on the, and then I put leggings underneath it, so I'm like, I'm sorry. You know, I'm sorry, but it's only been three days, and I still can barely move my arms. It's like, today, today was the first day I actually put real clothes on, and I literally was like, like, the little kid, my daughter is like putting, Jessica came and was putting it over my head, and they got it has spaghetti, so, you know, so it was even easier, and she's, and I'm like, you know, like, going into it like that.
Yeah, it's awesome with Abby, I was like, thank goodness you did this in May, and you have short sleeves, you don't even have to deal with the sweatshirt, trying to put that over your head and over your arm.
Right, cut everything.
That is, that is the good thing. And I'm like, you just, I can't even take a shower by myself. I have like a mesh sling that I have to use, and, you know, and...
They're all flocking back, Judy.
...to see who's gonna be available to dry me afterwards. And they gotta have, you know, three daughters. Tim, you bought a cookie just for yourself? You didn't bring a plate?
No, listen, I did.
Oh, I hope Andy remembers. I wanted one cookie, but it wasn't worth all the work.
Deal someone else's.
It's someone else's, I can't do... Okay, thank you. Going to the bathroom was enough exercise. I hope it's not up to the YouTube.
So disrespectful.
I don't know why it's this way. Because she didn't show up.
Promised tonight, I think.
That's right.
The prom?
Yeah, there was a lot of, call their names.
That's why it went so quick.
She was going straight from here, maybe?
Was she?
Or was she a junior? Is Emily...
Is Emily a junior or senior?
Is Emily Smith a junior or senior?
Junior.
Oh, okay. Because when she said prom, is that why none of the, all the teachers were, must have been over there?
The high.
The high.
The high ones.
But how about the hills? No, no, but I'm saying the teachers. There weren't hills teachers here, were there? But just one teacher, how about the others? She couldn't even show up last year. How about, how about, how about France? Yeah, Jen France. I'm surprised.
Thought he was coming?
No, as no.
So Allison France out there.
Did you? She didn't come though.
Well, Jen got it.
Jen got the award. And Kate had surgery, or? Testing usually? Who? Why? That's okay. Hopefully people need... Could you open it for me? May I have your water? Could you open it for us? Oh, he doesn't, he's having soda.
Mr. Rea paging, Mr. Rea?
You're being summoned. Is it too odd? That's the problem.
Wow.
Oh, look at that. Aww. Oh, sure, the good one. Thank you, thank you.
All right, now that the nosing is over, we'll resume our meeting, so... Sue, are you ready?
I am ready.
Okay. Is there any correspondence coming for the board?
No, there are not.
I would like to read an email that we all received. I highlighted sections, I'm not gonna read the whole thing. This is from a student, or a parent of a student from Parsippany Hills High School, graduated in 2023. Says, "Dr. Sutter, I am writing to express my deepest gratitude to the entire staff at Parsippany Hills High School for the exceptional education and preparation my son Nicholas, class 2023, received during his time there. The dedication and commitment of the teachers have played a pivotal role in his academic and personal growth. Thanks to the rigorous and supportive learning environment at PHHS Nico, earned 18 college credits from his advanced placement exams and NGIT dual enrollment credits. This remarkable achievement has not only given him a significant head start in his college education, but also demonstrated the high academic standards upheld by the school's faculty. We are especially grateful to Mr. Daley, Ms. Mann, Ms. Perry, Ms. Gandhi, Mr. Berkowitz, Mr. Lombardo, Ms. Anderson, and Ms. O'Boyle for their outstanding instruction and encouragement, which undoubtedly contributed to his success. Nico is attending Eastern Connecticut State University, where he was awarded a full scholarship through the university's honors program. Nico's continued success at Eastern Connecticut State University is an additional testament to the superb quality of education he received from PHHS. Please extend our heartfelt thanks to all the teachers, coaches, and staff members who have contributed to Nico's journey. Their dedication and hard work do not go unnoticed and are deeply appreciated by all of us. We look forward to seeing Parsippany Hills High School continue to thrive and positively influence the lives of many more students." So I want to thank the parent for that letter. Is there any unfinished business? Mr. Rea?
Not sure there's the right section for it, but just a reminder that Saturday is the fundraiser for Theo, the two-year-old who has brain cancer, and it's at the PAL. There is a spaghetti dinner fundraiser, so if you're able to attend, or if you just want to donate, please do so.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business? No. Can I have approval of the minutes for Executive Sessions 1 and 2 and regular minutes of May 23, 2024? May I have a roll call, please? I'm sorry, may I have a motion to approve those minutes? Susie? We'll get back to the committee, Anne Sheethol. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Berrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
You have to recuse on number two, Executive Minutes number two. It was the...
Recuse on number two, Executive Minutes number two, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Cogan?
Recuse.
Mrs. Mayer?
Yes.
Mr. Rea?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldrur?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Recuse on Executive Session 2, yes to Executive Session 1 in the regular minutes. Now we'll go back to committee reports, only because I missed it and didn't want to go back at the time, so... Committee reports, I didn't see any posted online. So no, no, no. Well, you're gonna give, you're gonna give a report, Mrs. Goldrur, and Allison, if you wouldn't mind, you were in attendance at, where, last Saturday? If you don't mind.
Yes, the school board's Legislative Committee met last Saturday, and I did not put the minutes in the packet, but I could definitely do that.
Do you want to wait until next meeting? It's up to you.
Yeah, the main topic was that all the legislators are going through their budget proposals, so that not much else is going on except for all the budget discussions. And we did hear from two Assemblywomen who both had previously been on Boards of Education, so that was pretty interesting to know that, you know, there are representatives in the state who actually have Board of Ed experience and intend to use that experience, you know, to the benefit of all districts. And then, once I put the, once they send the minutes out and they get in the board packet, please feel free to reach out with any questions.
Thank you, and thank you for spending your time at that committee. It's on a Saturday, right?
Yes, yes. Down in Trenton.
All day in Trenton, so thank you for that. Mrs. Goldrur, would you mind just summarizing the leadership meeting that we had with Dr. Sutter this afternoon?
Okay. Today, we had, we had the B, the leadership meeting with Dr. Sutter, and what was, it was, I was gonna call you Dr. Chaffo.
I'll take it, you know, it's, I know I didn't deserve it, but...
You have an honorary degree. Okay, with Mr. Chaffo, myself, and Dr. Sutter, and what we discussed was the Assistant BA position, the waiver for Robin for possible additional year, and we also discussed policy writing services, Strauss Esme versus NJ SBA, and the, also some podcast topics and timeframes, but again, that is just, it was just very, you know, nothing, nothing was firmed up, nothing was, it was just that we, that we do have to get together and make sure that we keep that going throughout the summer, starting for, for next year. I also did attend the, we did have the county, the NJ SBA County meeting yesterday for, so that we could approve our new bylaws, and they were approved in that. It was, and I had completely forgotten about it, but I had brought that up about two years ago to the, to the board, that, first of all, the bylaws are new, they've been emailed to everyone, so please take a look at them, that is how we do operate on the county level. And with respect to what I had brought up two years ago, it was a lawsuit that had been brought to the state Board of, to the State Department of Education, and it was about redistricting of schools and sending, at this moment, I forget exactly the title, but it was a lawsuit saying that kids should be able to go to, it's not choice schools, but kids should be able to go to whatever school districts throughout New Jersey that they want to go to. So for example, we could be, you know, busing someone from, from, let's say, Newark or Somerville to Parsippany if they, you know, if they felt that we had a program that they, that they would need. So, and, and the state would be, you know, the lawsuit, it would be mandated by the lawsuit, and at the time, you know, everybody thought, oh, it's not gonna go anywhere, but apparently, it has been being pushed through the legal system, and they are in negotiations for some type of settlement, which is kind of scary. But, you know, that was a lawsuit that was brought to the state, I think, more than five years ago, actually. So we have to keep abreast of that situation because it would affect us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Susie? As the board knows, and the vast number of people in attendance tonight may know, we have been talking with the town about, excuse me, residential developments and their impact to the school district, especially those that are being developed in what's called a pilot project, where there's no tax revenue that's dedicated to the school district. We have a tentative date for our next meeting of June 17. That was provided to the mayor for consideration. The ad hoc committee, as well as Dr. Sutter and Mrs. Tedesco, would be available to attend that meeting. Has not yet been finalized, but that's the date that's out there as a tentative date right now. Excuse me. High school senior awards at PHHS and PHS were held on June 3 and June 5. I attended the PHHS awards, it was well-attended, it was a great night to see the seniors be awarded for a number of academic and other reasons. I think there was at least one board member that went to PHS? Ah, Michelle, would you be, could I say a few words? No?
It's always a great night because it's great to see all the kids celebrated for all their efforts in lots of different ways, and hear the different types of recognition that they received. So it was a great event. Thank you very much. My daughter was recognized a few times, which is very nice.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up. Good. Excuse me. We have our high school graduations coming up on June... coming up on June 20. I know we always look forward to those. Please pray for good weather. The board was invited to two Guru Vandana Teacher Appreciation Events. The first was on June 1 and the second is coming up on June 9. Did anyone attend those?
Judy, would you mind just speaking about that?
The event was on Saturday, June 2.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay. It's a, it's a really beautiful event. It's teacher appreciation. And the really great thing about it is the teachers are nominated by the students. It's completely, they, they run the show. It's the teachers that make a difference to them. So on June the 2nd, the teachers who attended, Rosalia Santa Fury, I don't know where she's from because it didn't, they didn't give me her assignment, from Eastlake, Mary Cohen, and Ms. Sebastian Powell was there because principals were invited. So he did come with his family, his daughters and his wife. It was, they're really cute little girls. Brooklawn, Mrs. Norma Sudak, and Mrs. Margarita Kosia, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing. Troy Hills was Jamie Vento. Littleton was Mrs. Caitlin Moschella and Mrs. Elena Betines. On Sunday, they're having another event in Randolph at the community center from 3:00 to 5:30. And they will be honoring one of Parsippany's teachers from Brooklawn, Marlene Gibson. So the parents are, they revere teachers. It's just beautiful. And these teachers will never forget that these kids put them up for this. It's like the Oscar, you know, it's from your own. So it was a great event. Parents could not have been more accepting of teachers. They, they really, it's just a beautiful time. So if anybody wants to go on Sunday, it's 3:00 to 5:30 at the Randolph Community Center.
Thank you, Judy. Any questions for Judy on that event? I had the pleasure of attending the valedictorian salutatorian dinner. Dr. Sutter was in attendance and our four students, two from each high school, were also in attendance. It was a great evening, well attended by all the Morris County school districts. And first time I attended that, and I was really taken aback by how articulate these kids are and hearing what schools are going to and what they're going to be studying. You know, I'm really convinced the future of the country is in good hands with them. Okay, Dr. Sutter, superintendent's bulletin number 21.
Okay, thank you, President Chaffo. On Thursday, on Thursday, May 30, 2024, I attended the mini grant presentation at the CEC building. A special thanks to Dr. Mulrooney and Tiffany Young for hosting the event. And thank you to the BOL members who were in attendance, the administrators who attended the presentations, and to all the mini grant presenters. As Dr. Mulrooney said, teachers do so much during the day, the week, the year, and yet these mini grant award recipients found time in their busy schedule to create fun and meaningful activities for our students. Thank you to all of them. As Mr. Chaffo mentioned, we attended the PHHS senior award ceremony on Monday, June 3. I want to congratulate all the seniors who won awards. I also want to thank Dr. Thompson, the guidance department, and the families who donated scholarship money to graduating seniors. You made the night very special. Mr. Chaffo and I also attended the valedictorian salutatorian dinner at the Hanover Marriott. It was a wonderful event, as Mr. Chaffo said, and each recipient was well deserving of their award. And I think we just became best friends. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna watch the movie together. I think we've been together so much. I attended the PHS award ceremony last night. And again, I want to congratulate the seniors who won awards. And I also want to thank Mrs. Grucci and our assistant principals, the PHS guidance department, and the families who donated scholarship money to graduating seniors. Again, they made the night spectacular. And finally, I wanted to give a special thanks to Dr. Mulrooney and Tiffany Young and the supervisor, Jared W., for all the hard work and effort they put into organizing the district-wide professional development day on Tuesday. Dr. Mulrooney's efforts and creativity received such positive reviews, as evidenced by the comments relayed to the central office, specifically to Mr. Ricker. Thanks, Dennis. You really hit it out of the park. Tonight, for your approval, we have superintendent bulletin items 1 through 41, with addendum and read-in items 42 to 63. If you have any questions for Dr. Mulrooney about the PD Day, ask him now.
Like a big party, huh?
That's a little bit far.
I heard it was a.
Usually we, I spend a little time, we're a little more ready for the teacher options. This time it's June. They've worked their butt off all year. So it was very important for a lot of those people to choose what they wanted to work on. But we had three sessions of peanut butter jelly sandwiches, maybe. So we made 2,600 sandwiches approximately in those three hours.
Wow.
And Jabal Jackson, who's a PHS, a nonprofit organization, picked them up and delivered them to some of these contests in the inner city. Some people leave. All the leftover peanut butter jelly was donated to the Patriots of the Bears. We had people donating blood all day. So 15 staff members donated blood. There were 62 points, which we helped 186 people.
Wow.
There actually is a shortage now of blood.
Yes.
A great thing. People were just doing amazing stuff from collaborating departmentally, free level, to playing volleyball together, or yoga, meditation, or Top Chef in the food rooms. It was a great day. The PEF, University of the Foundation, in Torres Strait. So food trucks to come. So when people under lunch, they walk down the courtyard and have the delicious food.
It's been a long time ago.
It was a really good day. I think it's definitely important to recharge the staff. We're doing, I think, we looked at the PDD's today, our academic meeting, and we're going to get that.
Any, any other questions for Dr. Mulrooney? Questions on the superintendent's bulletin for Dr. Sutter?
No.
Okay, seeing none. Secretary's report. Sue?
On tonight's secretary's report, we have the regular business motions, including the approval for the district to solicit bids for a lease purchase financing agreement.
Any questions for Stikestra on secretary's report? Seeing none. Move on to hearing of the public. At this time, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book at the lectern, and state your name for the record. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Wright, I missed you.
Can I make just a point in new bits?
Yes, sure.
I just wanted to recognize that June is Pride Month, and I recognize our district's commitment to diversity. And I want to say happy Pride to every new members of the LGBTQIA+ community. Thanks.
Thank you. State your name for the record and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful if you would like to address the board, to please come up now and sign the book so that you are ready when the first speaker is finished. As a reminder, we are video recording this meeting. If you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask you not to provide your home address, rather only the name of the municipality in which you live. If you are a parent wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request that the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in their comments and refer to bylaw 0168 for further information regarding the videotaping of our meetings. Mr. DeVito.
There we go. Yeah. So, yeah, hi, I'm Matt DeVito, President of Parsippany. First want to bring up, I'm not sure if I was, came here a little late. I missed the student commit, student reports. The PHSS Seamer Prom happened last week. It was well attended, from what I heard from my daughter. And they were very well, well, very well security. I heard that they actually did breathalyzer tests for some of the kids kind of randomly, which is kind of good to hear that they, you're making sure everyone was being safe. So it was a very well, well attended event. Just a note that Mrs. Mayor, Ms. Kosia, does it pronounce her name? That's, you had it correct. So very good. From Brooklawn. You mentioned Ms. Kosia from Brooklawn. So that's one of my children's teachers. So I remember. Had to pronounce it right. So that's good. Lastly, I heard the Mrs. Goldrur mention about this lawsuit about, you know, redistricting and sending students to other places. If you think about it, there's a good number of students we already have that we send to either, you know, obviously to, to Tavotek every, you know, each year, they kind of transfer into there instead of going to one of the high schools. I know there's programs at Morris Knowles and at Roxbury where within, once those, those students decide to go to those high schools, they have to be bus there as well. So it's something to think about. We're already kind of doing some of what they're, what they're suggesting. So that's all I wanted to say tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Seeing no one else, I'll close the public session of the meeting. Dr. Sutter, any comment?
None at this time.
Okay, thank you. We are now up to roll call vote on the superintendent's bulletin number 21, items number 1 through 41, with addendum items 42 to 63, and read-ins. May I have a motion, please? Michelle, second. Judy? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Berrios?
Recuse on 58, yes to everything else.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Rea?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappelle?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
No on 5, yes on everything else.
Mrs. Goldrur?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes. Oh, go ahead, Suzie. Yeah, please.
Okay, sorry. I just wanted to clarify. The, it's a New Jersey school segregation lawsuit. Parties want more time to negotiate before trial. Now, what it was is that, what it said was, the suit says the state violates its own constitution by preventing students affected by the de facto segregation from receiving a thorough and efficient education and equal protection under the law. So what would happen is if more students wanted to come to Parsippany, let's say, our students wouldn't have the first right. The, we could actually be having to send our children, if our schools fill up, with other, you know, with other, let's say from Patterson or Newark, Jersey City, if our schools fill up from there, our kids would have to go to wherever there are the nearest openings would, would be technically. That's what would happen. So that is why it's, you know, it's, for me at least, it's kind of scary. I mean, not for my own children, but just in general for, for the way that we're always, you know, that we have the community, you know, elementaries and, and the middle school and the high school. And, and they would not have first priority to their own schools.
Yeah, thank you for that. It's, I think it's, it's a bigger issue than just sending a student to this district or receiving a student from that district. I think it was a disparate impact analysis that the courts were convinced there was, there was a disparate impact on certain groups throughout the state, hence their, their finding that the way things work right now are not constitutional. I, I think it's a long way to go, from what I know, which is not a whole lot. So I apologize for my ignorance on the topic. But I think there's a long way to go before this actually sees the light of day. The problem with court opinions that get adjudicated at the courts instead of the legislature is they, they, the government of the state then has to figure out how to do what the court is mandating. And the devil's always in the details. And that's the part that makes me concerned. But thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, motion to adjourn. Suzie? Dr. Wright at the end. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.